Davey?
Yeah.
Okay, I lost my ready to pull.
Did you get it?
Now, what do I do? I take something and I'll take this thing?
Alright. Are you ready, Linda? Uh, start the meeting.
By pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, by the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have the approval of the minutes from our February 11th meeting.
A motion to approve the minutes.
Motion's been made by Jackie. You approve the minutes?
Seconded though.
Seconded by Lynn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously. Any additions to the agenda tonight? You have one, for sure.
Other than that one, I do not have any.
Okay. And the one is the banner discussion that we discussed last meeting, and we decided to get more information on it. We have more information on it, so we can have that discussion tonight. So, we can put that, uh...why don't we put that, uh...why don't we put right down at the bottom after the setup finance committee meeting?
Good.
Banner. Okay? So, a motion on that.
I'd make the motion to accept the agenda for tonight with the one addition.
I second.
Motion you made, and seconded, to add the banner discussion to the agenda tonight. All in favor, saying aye. Affirmed by Sadie, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, our first item on the agenda, fire relief. Mr. Steve, both or step up?
Alright. Well, I did make copies for everybody this year, because I just thought it was...
You did or didn't?
You did enough. I did not.
Okay.
So, I'm just gonna tell you where we're at. For the start of 2019, uh, the Fire Department Relief Association is at $728,754. What we have decided amongst the rank and file is that we are gonna leave our retirement at $2,300 a year this year, and that'll put us at 100% funded. How we come up with that number is, we always kinda calculate out three different things. It's the monies that we get from the city and the townships, which is right around $28,600. We do a 5% return on our monies, is where we hope to be, and that calculation would be $37,867. And then, we always have our 2% state aid that we get, or that the city gets and graciously gives it to the fire department for our retirement, which is $51,000, and that also is an estimate number. So, our total is $846,212. If we stay at $2,300 a year of service, um, our asset, or our liabilities are $841,478. So, it's just a couple thousand dollars under what we're projecting to be, which is 100% funded. So, that's why I'm not asking you to sign anything tonight, because we're not moving our retirement. It's gonna be the same as last year. So, and like last year, we were at like 106% funded, and thankfully, we were, because that last quarter really hit us hard, like it did everybody else. So, um, having that, and then our monies that we had, you know, it kept us at 100%. So, you know, just a couple thousand dollars over 100% funded. So, with that being said, not needing the blessing for the $2,300, but we will again be asking, um, for that annual donation of $550 per firefighter. And the city in the past has always ran that after 26 firemen, and, uh, right now, we currently have 29, correct, without Hasser? 30, without Hasser.
Yep.
So, um, we did have a township meeting last Wednesday, Thursday? It's Thursday, and the townships, uh, did, uh, did approve a $550 increase. And I don't know if that was for 26 members, or 29, or 30 members. Bob, you might know, but nevertheless, uh...
I don't think they actually said number of members. They just left it at the $550 again.
Okay. So, um, open for any comments or questions about the relief, uh...
Could you send me that documentation via email, just so you can have it on record?
Of what? Of our request?
Uh, no, of what you usually bring.
Okay. I can do that. Yeah, I can do that.
Steve, are you looking for us to vote on this tonight, or are you just presenting this? Um, I'm assuming you want our answer here fairly soon, right?
Well, it does help us, so that we can take it back to the department. I don't really need to know until, uh, the second Thursday in March is when our next meeting is. And I told them last month that I would be meeting with you, and hopefully, we would have some answers. So, typically, we do it, you know, now, and, uh...
I don't think we have any problem doing it. I guess the question becomes, do we do, uh, for fighter...
It's always been at 26.
It always has been at 26.
It's always been at 26 for the city. Yes.
And how that came, why that is, Dave, is years and years ago, in our old bylaws, we had a 26-member roster, and we never, we never left that 26 members. Now, what we do is, because of the training purposes and all the things, we put on three, four, or five extra members, and then they just, they train, and they just work with us as the older, the guys retire. So, it just, it just makes it a lot easier to go where we're going.
Sure.
So, um, and I'm not asking you to go to 30 firefighters, or, you know, I'm just, I'm just here to ask, you know, to please support us and keep us going. And it has really helped us. I mean, we've been doing this now for, golly, 15 years, I'm gonna guess.
Sure.
And it really has brought us up from the bottom, and also, we're asking to, you know, to keep our department in the middle. This is what we really like to be. And this has really helped us out.
Okay.
I would make the motion to go ahead and begin with the $550, um, per fireman, 26, at a 26-member.
Motion's been made to, uh, submit $550 per 26 firefighters to the fire department.
I second.
And seconded. All in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you. And like I said, our meetings are the second Thursday of every month, and I really encourage all of you to try and come to a meeting and see what we really do. Um, our relief meeting starts at 7:30, and our regular meeting is at 8:00. And we're really proud. We have a lot of good activities and just a good group of guys down there.
Remodels great.
And we just remodeled our meeting.
Yeah, looks good.
We spent 26,000, 28,000 on our remodel down there. That came from the relief, uh, members. And, uh, so, with a lot of help from the community, we were able to do that. So, please come on down there. I know I say it every year, and I know we're all busy, but please come down there and take in a meeting and, and see what we're all about, because we do a lot of cool things. So, alright?
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate what you guys do.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, thanks. I'm gonna grab that out of your office.
Okay. Um, next item on the agenda is the midco contract renewal from City of Piers. Last, we believe that, uh, 2013 was the last time we signed anything with them, and auto-renewed in 2016, and now, they're asking us to renew again. Correct?
Yep. And I believe there's a $5 or $10 discount, so...
Yeah, a $10 bundle discount. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary, so...
And we're looking to renew that for both City Hall and the fire department.
And this is the same charge that we have been getting charged? But by this time, what? Yeah, plus.
I motion to approve it.
That one's just for the City of Piers, right? For City Hall?
Okay. Motion's been made to approve the midco contract for the City of Piers, City Hall. Motion made by Jackie, seconded by Lynn. All in favor, indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. I'll vote for the Fire Hall.
I'll make the motion to approve the Fire Hall.
Motion made by Lynn to approve the midco contract for the Fire Hall.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jackie. All in favor, indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Again, carried unanimously. Comprehensive plan review. I understand it was a comprehensive plan meeting.
It was, yes. We just met as a committee to go over the comprehensive plan, see where the city was at, what departments have been working on. So, in your packet was included just some of the goals and some of the things that the city has been working on. I don't know if you guys had any questions regarding this. Been working on, um, infrastructure, public safety, zoning maps, commercial goals, trying to promote Piers as well, just a few things. Trying to update our Small Cities Housing Grant and stuff, and with our EDA.
So, are we applying for that, or do we apply for it, or do we have to apply for those monies for the grant, or is it something that's given to us?
We did back in 2010 and 2012, so that's just the funds that we currently have.
Okay.
What was nice to see when we were going through this as a committee is, we really are staying up to date with what our comprehensive plan shows. I mean, we were able to show, as you can see, um, you know, there's something in pretty much each area that we're working on.
Great.
So, tonight, we're just looking to approve the comprehensive plan as it stands?
As its continuation, actually.
And then, we'll attach this to it, correct? As our meeting for that, correct?
Oh.
To show that we, that we have to end it?
No.
I would make the motion to go ahead and, um, approve the, um, review of the current comprehensive plan.
Motion's been made by Lynn to approve the review of the comprehensive plan.
I second.
Seconded by Jackie. All in favor, indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Morrison County, 2018 cleanup day grant agreement. That's just an agreement with the county?
Yes. Um, this is just kind of a annual, an annual grant that we have been receiving. It's for, the first one is for the cleanup day. We receive money to assist us with cleanup day, which will be April 27th, the last Saturday in April, the last Saturday of garage sale days. Yeah, we're just looking to accept the grant and look at that moving. And the recycling agreement is the same received money as well.
They go up on charges?
They did, yes.
Wow. Significantly, in some spots.
Some items?
Yeah.
Yeah. What was that?
We're gonna have to make sure that people are aware of that, because they're gonna be awful upset when they show up.
Yeah, we should have a sheet of it there.
We always do the one advertisement on the record, I guess. If we wanna do more, we could.
We could, we normally put that in the advertisement?
Yeah.
And we decided to utilize a lot of the grant to have it not go up too much for the, on our part, so we're utilizing it, so the residents won't see too much of an increase.
No, there is a big increase on a lot of these items, from what we previously have.
Certain recyclable items.
Yep. Electronics is where you're seeing the bill.
Yeah.
Well, what, computer monitors were...
TV.
TV?
TV was 10 bucks last year, and it's 25.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what we get a lot of. We get a lot of those.
Did we decide to subsidize $10?
Uh, I believe we went to 15.
Subsidize 10 instead of 15.
Yeah.
Better than nothing.
So, I have the full, the full cost of what they're charging.
Whatever they're charging, we did subsidize.
So, the grants kinda help us with subsidizing the fees.
Otherwise, you're just gonna see them in ditches. Seriously.
Yeah.
So, for right now, we just need to accept the grant?
The grant.
To determine what we, what we want.
My motion to accept the grant.
Uh, for the cleanup day?
Yep.
And the recycling?
Yeah.
I suppose we should do those in separate motions.
Yeah.
Second that one?
I'll second the cleanup day grant.
Motion's been made by Jackie, seconded by Lynn to accept the cleanup grant. All in favor, indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make the motion to do the 2018 recycling agreement.
And, motion's been made to accept the 2018 recycling agreement.
I second.
By Lynn, seconded by Jackie. All in favor, indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sourceball represent, carried unanimously. Sourceball Representative Assembly.
If we just go back, I'd just like to make sure we state that the cleanup day will be April 27th.
Which, yeah, April 27th, we always do it at the end of the Piers garage, area garage sales. Hopefully, this one's gone by then.
I mean, this looks old.
Eight to 10, is what we normally do?
Yep, eight to 10.
Eight to 10, exactly. Okay. And there'll be more coming out on that, right?
Yes, I will send out a quick thing to the record and...
Yeah. Sourceball Representative Assembly, just an FYI, right?
Uh, well, I would like to, uh, I have to have the sheet turned into Sourceball for March 11th. So, if you guys could determine who's interested and just let me know. I can check my schedule. I, I can't go that day.
We, we can have up to two representatives from the council. Uh, that could be there. If a point wanted to go, it would be an additional charge. But I think we should at least try to get somebody there. I wouldn't attempt to go.
Okay, so you want me to put your name?
Put my name down for going.
I can probably go.
It's April 10.
April 10?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can probably go.
Perfect. So, I will put both of you down, and I will RSVP to...
Get the exact timing of the schedule of things. Okay?
Perfect, thank you.
Consumption and display permits, both for the Piers Ballroom and the Piers Golf Course. And these are the consumption permits that allow them to allow customers to bring their own bottles into the facility.
Any issues, Eric?
No, not at all.
Do you want them on two separate ones?
Yes, please.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to go ahead and, um, renew the consumption display permit for the Piers Ballroom.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Lynn, seconded by Jackie, to approve the consumption permit for Piers Ballroom. All in favor, indicated by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. And for the Piers Golf Course.
I, uh, motion to approve it.
Motion's been made by Jackie, and seconded by Lynn, to approve the consumption display permits for the Piers Golf Course. That was a nodding of her cap.
Give me time.
All in favor, indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Takes us to the reimbursement acceptance form. Basically, we're receiving a $30 reimbursement out of a state that was invoiced correctly several years ago.
Yes, and...
Is that, that's going back to a lawsuit that Fergus Falls went through, when they were charging everybody across the state the inappropriate price for small PC equipment on squad cars?
Okay.
And he was ended up being charged, and that's our, sort of our restitution. We got one check.
Thirty bucks.
Thirty dollars.
One check, what, a year ago, I think? So, this is the second one for, it's just a small, because we've only ordered two squad cutters, so it's, it's just to correct what they owed back to the City of Piers.
And at this time, we need to have a motion to re, to accept that reimbursement form.
My motion to, um, accept the reimbursement form?
Uh, motion's been made by Jackie, seconded by Lynn, to accept the reimbursement acceptance form. All in favor, indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Grad Bash donation 2019. So, we did get a letter, I believe there was a letter in there from the Grad Bash requesting a donation. Um, bringing everybody up to speed, one of the things that we did authorize through the park board was to give each student a free nine holes of golf in their normal packet. And the Grad Bash, what they get is a packet of, of things from different businesses, different associates that each student gets.
Senior, right?
Uh, senior, so the senior Grad Bash, yes. The park board has decided to donate one free round of golf to that.
Awesome.
That is cool.
And that's a 1350 value right now. If the rates don't raise, if the rates raise, it's even more of a value. I believe that comes to about $1,200 total.
Yeah.
Yes, there's Navy students, or roughly about Navy students. So, I guess the question is, do we want to do something over and above that?
I think that's the donation. Personally, that's a, that's a really, that's a big donation.
I think it's a very nice donation, yes.
Yeah. It's something they've never gotten before.
Right. And, and part of it is, it works good for the golf course, too. Hopefully, we're getting people out to see what we have out there.
Have, Bob, have you been in contact with somebody from the school?
You know, I called Kim Reddick, she doesn't have a senior. She was gonna contact me with my head.
Okay.
And that's how she wanted to run it, but...
It looks like, it's Nicole Rose.
That's who wrote this letter, right?
Yep.
It was Nicole.
It's Nicole.
Um, maybe we can just, you and I, talk about it tomorrow or something and figure out the message.
Yeah, I would recommend we just respond to Nicole, that's what we're...
It says door prize, senior gift bags, cash donation, so I think that that's a sign and all.
So, and this would be considered a senior gift bag?
Yeah. So, I motion to just approve what we've done with the nine holes of golf.
I'll second that.
Motion that's been made and seconded to donate to the Grad Bash seniors, one free round of golf, as approved by the park board previously. All in favor, indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Uh, setup finance committee meeting that was on the agenda, but the truth is, truth are there, is we need to corner Kyle on that.
Yes.
And I don't see.
He's a little busy in this country.
Um, Linda, what's your available, will be visible at Dallas?
Anytime, pretty much. Monday nights, obviously, we have a council, but other than that.
Nicole, why don't, why don't you reach out to Kyle and see what he's got available, and then give back to Linda, and I can, I will drop everything at common. If it works for you guys, will work for me.
We'll schedule it out like at least a week or something.
Whatever, whatever works for you guys, yes.
Perfect, I can do that.
Fair enough. Okay. Uh, takes us to banner from Piers Legion Park. To clear things up on the banner, uh, I know Denny was here last meeting. Uh, two years ago, Piers was comp, City of Piers was comp for a banner. Uh, every two years, they renew their $400 every two years. The City of Piers' banner is a little worn, so if the banner's worn, uh, the city will, the Piers Legion Park will pay for the redo of the banner, but the Legion Park, or the city would have to pay for the banner itself, right, the banner. And that's $400 every two years. And what we talked about, I think, a little bit, is having, doing the advertising on it with the Piers campground and golf course.
Yes.
So, I guess, do you wanna go forward on that, or...
I think it would be a really good thing for our city to be advertised for what assets it has, and it can bring in a lot more money and potential jobs. And, you know, the more people see, and the more people know what we have to offer, the more they wanna come and do those things with their families. So, I would motion that we approve it.
I guess the question I have is where that 400 comes out of, where, what budget line I don't remember where it goes.
Advertising?
Advertising. Do advertising or professional services from the golf course somewhere?
Okay.
Would we split it between the two entities, city and golf?
That's not a bad idea.
It could. That could be a good idea, because it's some for the city, some for the campground, some for the golf course.
Yeah.
Do a little bit for everything, probably. Okay.
Just look to see where we've got extra funds.
Motion's been made by Jackie to go forward with purchasing the banner for the Piers Legion Park.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Lynn. All in favor, indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Comes up with that design, Dave?
Pardon?
How was that designed?
Uh, it will be designed by Bob and Nicole. We'll sit down and determine what they wanna put on there, okay? We can design it. Uh, if somebody wants to get involved in that, please do. Um, I'm not very artistic, I'm not gonna lie to you. But I think we should indicate the things we have at the golf course. I don't know that we wanna put phone numbers necessarily on there unless they're big enough. Keep in mind, people are looking at this from a few feet away, so, um, and Danny can help you with that. Don't wanna do certain colors. They don't show up very well, like white, and wanna stay with darker colors, things of that nature, so...
Those froggies make them?
Yes, that's who makes them.
They've got really good design people over there, so... And we can give them ideas and they can...
Yeah, yes.
Perfect.
Yep. You, you really need to come up with the information you want on it, and if there's specific colors, to request that, but if there's not, we'll put the colors together.
I think the best background is usually black, right? Like, uh, like Dave Sayers and, uh...
Yeah, that's a nice background.
It shows, black and red show up well. If you do white, you don't see them from behind anymore.
White does not show up well.
Yep.
There you go. Good to know.
Black and red are kind of our Piers colors, so...
Golf courses are green, hopefully.
Hopefully.
Well, hey, Danny, you'd have some pictures I'd bet, too. I took a bunch of the drone picture that showed...
Yeah, I don't know, whatever we're thinking, put our heads together and, well, think, maybe we have some pictures of people out there golfing, or somebody golfing, or golf club, or...
What color's gonna pop up? Black.
There's no question. Yeah. We wanna, um, probably work that camping a little bit, too. Okay. Department reports. Chris is not here. Bobby, oh.
We'll have a whole lot tonight, but just, uh, our, oh, Paul had started last Tuesday, so he's gonna, actually did one smaller mobile event, and a bunch of pollen and that, so it was a good week for him to kinda get a taste of everything, so. Um, just a few things on the electric. Um, our contract with Minnesota Power changes at the first of the year, and our demand charge is gonna go up a little bit, about 1%, so about $7,200 per year. The usage portion of our bill is expected to go down, so we should see kind of a wash as far as our city charges. We haven't talked about any rate increases to our residents yet.
So, as it sits right now, our usage is gonna go down. We're probably gonna see a loss of some income there, being our, we've got some expenses increase, whereas our rates going up, you know? So, we'll lose some, some income there, without any rate increases.
Right. Um, it was a good year to put in automatic repairs for the...
I bet.
It's been, uh, really challenging with the snow in the last month or so, but, uh, we're getting through it. I got a front-end alert coming tomorrow to help push back some of those banks that kinda got out of control on the west side of the...you know, get it pushed back tomorrow, hopefully. Um, the other thing for banners on Main Street, especially in the winter time, they're seven years old, and they're starting to wear pretty bad. Company we work with has a special going, um, this time of year, until April 1st is the deadline on it. If you wanna kinda redesign the look in the winter time, there'd be some ones I'd banner on the other side. If that's something that M L A's helped in the past...
It's the blue.
Yeah.
The blue ones? Yeah.
If we wanna do all decorations, or all something different, I guess, no. I think they're kinda looking at all the decorations.
I can do that, again. We can look at it, see what we can come up with, the pricing and...
Yeah. Design. Other than that, that's all I had.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll get some rest now.
Great.
Eric?
Good evening, everybody. My monthly report for January and February is in front of you. Um, we responded to 142 calls through the City of Piers and Eastern Morrison County. And I'll say Eastern Morrison County, because Dave and Lynn both are aware that it seems like the colony's been asking our assistance southeast a lot for some big felony investigations, so we've been spending some time outside the city limits. But I warned since Dave and Leonard both on my police commission board, sent you the email, just in case we did have complaints coming into the city hall. Nothing, uh, nothing very concerning, or complaints all the same. Actually, the count is actually down compared to the past years. And on the back page, I just put a list of what we're doing in the next three, four, the two, three months for training. A lot of it's mandatory training that we have to do to keep our post credits up. And some of it's training that Kelvin really enjoys, so it's in my budget to send him. And with him being young, I'd like to send him to train that it can, just to keep his vibe up and allow new things. Um, the big one that we've been doing, City of Piers is number six, Healthy Living Choices. We just go into the Holy Trinity. It's a five, it's a five-week session. We talk about vaping, drugs, alcohol, bowling, just a little bit of everything, what goes on inside the school. So, other than that, really, I have nothing to present to you besides the basic information that I own.
Eric, is that just at Holy Trinity, not at Pioneer?
Um, at Pioneer, because our classes are so big, what we do is, I go to Pioneer, and I go to each classroom two times through the, through the year with Michelle Ferguson, the social worker.
Okay.
So, we discuss that all in a, in a shorter, shorter term. It's, actually, I get, I get good feedback from Pioneer, because we get a lot of questions. And we're, instead of just fifth grade over at the Holy Trinity, it's, it's came through sixth grade at Pioneer. But we go there, we'll be in the next month, we'll go there with Miss Ferguson. And then, uh, the last month of school, we go back, just for last, last one big power, just to talk about reminders about safety and what goes on. We'll just talk about reminders about safety and what goes on away from school in the summer. So it's, it's a big hit. I think if we went to our Pioneer, there would be, there'd be too many man hours that would be taken away from the road here. And we discussed already with the past, prior to winter break, they were spending 10 to 12 hours already at the school. Everything taken away from the guys on your city streets, from their school. So right now, the school's very happy with it, so am I. Getting, I just see.
I never talked about it and she's in first grade, so.
That's good.
All preventive care, right?
Or do they just waste for the three pound ruler?
No. No, it was good. Even in kindergarten, you guys, they went in and they talked about good touch and privates and just everything, like.
Ms. Ferguson's a rock star there. She's just, she knows every kid by name. And then we walk in, it's just great. So it's, it's a good thing it really is.
Feel safe and that's a good thing.
So that starts here in the month of March.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Eric. Thank you very much. Hey, Nicole, do you have anything for us?
Well, okay, we met with the EDA committee and I'm just going to go in through some things and checking on funds and seeing what our SEDP and EDA can do for residents and businesses in town. So more to probably come sooner, hopefully rather than later. But that's about it.
Do you have any results on the audit or anything yet?
That'll come sometime in March. Actually, the first meeting, it might be the second, just depends how fast they can work on it and how many other cities they have to do. I haven't heard anything, so no news is good news, right?
No news is good news in that perspective, that's right. They haven't had any follow-up, in other words.
Nope, just a few more questions that they had for me last week, but other than that, nothing.
Treasurers report.
The checkbook balance with the statement on January 31st was $1,201,433.75.
Make the motion to approve the treasures report?
Motion that made by Lynn, seconded by Jackie to approve the treasures report. All in favor, indicate by stating aye?
Aye.
Anything else? Anybody else got anything?
Make the motion to adjourn?
Motion's been made by Lynn to adjourn, seconded by Jackie. All in favor, indicate by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Somebody said that last.
I have to figure out how to stop this so it doesn't time out so fast.